This is the first time we're gonna have a billion dollar budget in the city of Tampa.
The president can have a press conference right now and and make major news, but will that affect you as much as you have a pothole in your road? Or your trash hasn't been picked up or your street is flooded?
Some neighborhoods in Tampa have had price increases of over a hundred percent in the last few years. Alrighty, everybody, super exciting episode. Today we have Tampa City Councilman Guido Maniscalco. Guido, welcome to the show.
Thanks for having me.
So we have so much to talk about. Let's start with the budget, though. Um, we were just mentioning before the podcast, the budget has tripled for roadworks, you said?
Yes, and I'll get into further details. So um, we have an almost two billion dollar budget in the city of Tampa, which is double what it was when I got elected in twenty fifteen. So in eight years, we've seen tremendous growth. And there's a lot of reasons. A lot of people are moving here, tax revenue, um, projects that we've taken on uh, since twenty fifteen, since I first got elected. But in this last budget, it became one of the most controversial ones because the mayor had proposed raising the millage, which is essentially raising taxes, which would appear on people's property tax bills. And um, we received a lot of pushback from the community, uh, residents, active, retired, business owners, property owners. It was a a very interesting cross-section of the community. And so, you know, to make a long story short, we rejected any tax increase. So the millage stayed the same. However, because we moved some money around in conjunction with the administration, with the mayor's office, we were able to more than double, almost triple our road paving budget without uh, raising any taxes.
You had, you did an interview and you put it very eloquently. You were talking about how in in previous times when there was a budget increase, it was necessary. Um, during the recession, there was a bunch of layoffs and you could, you had to make some budget cuts. But you, what you said was now's not the time for something like this.
Not the time. I mean, I don't have to tell you about the real estate market because you know how expensive homes are, how high rents are, how high the insurance crisis that's facing the state, car insurance, gas prices, although they're coming down as of, as of lately, but the cost of food, the cost of everything, inflation nationwide and inflation here in the Bay Area and inflation in Tampa. We are seeing uh, bigger numbers than than other parts of the country. So, you know, the point that I'm making is you can always ask the question, when is it the right time to raise taxes? But I don't think there could be a worse time to do so. Because people are getting hit from so many angles that they're going, we are already, we are already struggling and now there's this.
And this tax increase wouldn't be a sales tax, it would be a property tax, which is of course, real estate related. So it would compound on the interest rates and everything else you just talked about.
So on top of interest rates for people that are, if they're getting qualified for a mortgage, now they're facing, you know, because they're buying a a new home and they'll be getting more, they'll be paying more in property taxes than the previous owner sometimes. On top of that, there would be an increase in the city of Tampa's tax. So we scrapped that idea, yet we were able to balance the budget and still tackle uh, the most critical items. You know, another thing was we needed X amount of dollars for a matching grant to hire more police officers. So we looked at what we could cut in the budget to free up. It was like one point eight million dollars that we needed in matching funds for this grant. And we did that. We found the one point eight million and the in, police will be hiring, you know, more officers. So we didn't cut public safety, we didn't cut the road budget, we didn't stop. You know, we're, it's still business as usual and a little bit extra because we saw an increase in tax revenue from last year anyway. Even though we're capped at three percent, what's called Save Our Homes, which is federal legislation, we still see more in revenue because home sales, home prices, new people moving here, we're still benefiting from it. So my point was live within our means, live within the existing amount of money that we are able to get and work with theirs. Uh, in a one point nine billion dollar budget, you can find money, money to move around in order to make things work and we did that.
Something I'm trying to wrap my head around is the one point nine billion dollar budget. And the twenty nineteen mayoral election, in that race, it was talked about, oh, this is the first time we're gonna have a billion dollar budget in the city of Tampa. That was big news and all the candidates were talking about how they would spend the money and allocate the funds, et cetera. How does it go from a billion dollar budget to double that in four years?
So in that budget, we have what's called the Pipes Program, which is years, you know, it's a, it's not a one-year project, it's many years. But that's a multi-billion dollar investment over the life of the project. We have the Hannah Avenue Project with the New City Center. That was a hundred plus million dollars. Uh, all those things add up, even though they're financed and bonded and done over a, you know, thirty-year period, ten-year period, whatever, that adds to that. On top of um, we uh, not we, but the administration negotiated salary increase for police fire and ATU. ATU would be solid waste workers. It's, it's a lot of people. But um, we approved the contracts for their salary increases. So, which is not in the billions, it's in the multimillion dollar numbers, but still, all that adds up.
Right.
And um, hiring more people. Since twenty nineteen, hundreds of new employees have come on board.
Right.
So when you add everything up and when you look at the, the years out projection, you get to that one point nine billion dollars.
That makes sense. Plus, that's completely necessary. We've probably had, I don't know the numbers, but thousands, probably tens of thousands of people have moved to Tampa since twenty nineteen. We've had unbelievable high population growth, so we have to hire more employees at the city.
Sure, if we want to maintain the level of service, you know, we need more police officers, we need solid waste. We need whoever it is because, you know, we have to operate as a, as a business. And we want to deliver the, uh, we want to deliver exceptional quality of service and we need to sometimes hire more people. Departments grow, personnel costs, everything because we need to meet the demands of the, the, the growing population. So, you know, if you go back half a century and you look at how the city was, you say there was just this department and just a handful of people. And now it's multiple departments, multiple teams, multiple, again, but Tampa's much bigger than it was.
Right.
Ten years ago, fifty years ago, you know, we're in an ever-growing city, which is a good problem to have. Because fifteen years ago, with the Great Recession, with the real estate market crashing, uh, when I was graduating from USF, you know, most of my friends that moved here from out of state to attend school here, UT, USF, whatever it was, most of them moved back with the exception of one person. And they said, well, Tampa doesn't have what I need. This is in two thousand six, seven and eight. Now they're going, I regret moving out of Tampa. Cause they come back to visit and they see the difference uh, in the last fifteen years.
We're cool now.
Yeah, cool and in high demand and because before it was Miami. Now it's what about Tampa?
Right.
You know, or Miami and Orlando or Jacksonville. I think people have discovered the hidden secret that is Tampa and uh, the opportunity that's here. Um, it was undiscovered for many reasons and now people are flocking here.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a good thing. It's a good problem to have, but at the same time, it's more responsibilities, more demand. As the city grows, we want to meet that and not fall behind.
Is that, would you say that's a top priority within the city council is essentially growth management? I mean, we have thousands of people moving here.
It has to be. We don't want to be in the position where we say we have too large of a population and we just can't.
Yeah.
You know, we're only prioritizing this or that instead of saying, hey, more people are moving here. We need more in order to offer that level of service.
Are we always gonna be playing catch-up in terms of providing service to the people that live here? I mean, can we really get ahead of this population growth? Cause you're not gonna stop people from moving here.
No, I mean, there's a lot of benefits of living in Florida, no state income tax and um, I mean, I've talked to people from New York and California that have sold their homes and moved here and they say, one person said, it's a bargain. We sold our, our home for two million dollars and then paid cash for, I think it was seven fifty or eight fifty, which is a lot of money. I mean, I don't have that amount of money where I could say, here, I just write a check. But when you're selling a home for two million dollars and you're paying state income tax and you're paying everything else and you come here and you go, it's cheap compared to uh, where they're coming from. But us living here, it's not cheap. We're seeing uh, prices that we've never seen before. I remember you could buy a house in West Tampa forever for a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
Then when the market tanked, I would see houses for seventy-three thousand, eighty thousand, eighty-five thousand with the swimming pool. I remember these numbers. Now those houses are four, five, six hundred thousand dollars. It's, it's, or even more. It's crazy. But again, you know, we were lying dormant for a long time and now people have discovered us. So.
Yeah, a lot of people that have moved here have taken advantage of that kind of inverse. You know, if you sell a house for two million and you buy one here for seven fifty, that's, that's a good deal for you. But the Tampanian that's lived here and remembers the seventy-three thousand dollar house that they'd been saving for, granted, that was a long time ago. I mean, I remember in, as soon as twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, looking at real estate in West Tampa. And I remember hundred, hundred, ten thousand dollar homes. This, this is really not that long of a time period between when you could buy a house in the hundreds and now you're looking at at least three plus, hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Some neighborhoods in Tampa have had price increases of over a hundred percent in the last few years.
Yep.
Um, and we can dig into affordability and affordable housing. I know that's a super hot topic. And I know that's one of the challenges you guys are trying to tackle. Um, but first, I want to talk about where you're from. You're not from too far away from Ebor City, you're from West Tampa. So you grew up in that neighborhood and kind of tell me your timeline. Have you, did you stay in Tampa your whole?
So I um, I was born at Saint Joseph's Hospital on what used to be Buffalo Avenue renamed Martin Luther King. They changed the name when I was a kid. Uh, we lived in a house um, around the corner from the hospital. We lived in my grandfather's old house. He moved to a house, he built the house a couple blocks away. Later on, we moved, we built the house next door to my grandfather's house. He had passed away, so it was my grandmother, my aunt and uncle. We lived next door. Then my parents moved to like the Forest Hills area. Um, and then when I got my first apartment out of college, it was in West Tampa by uh, Saint Lawrence Jesuit right back there. But um, and, and then I live around the corner.
What did you study at USF?
English.
Okay.
I was gonna go to law school, that was the plan.
Ah.
So I uh, I went to school.
Pull the sucker kind of closer.
Okay, so I uh, I went to school in South Tampa for, you know, elementary, middle school. And then I started at Jesuit. I was there for a little bit, transferred to Tampa Catholic, graduated Tampa Catholic, went to University of Tampa for a year. Went to HCC, finished HCC, transferred to USF and then graduated USF in two thousand seven.
So you went to UT, HCC.
I did the tour. I did the tour. UT is, it's a beautiful school, very expensive.
Yeah.
And I didn't want school loans, student loans. So I worked in college, tried to pay my way and I couldn't manage UT without having to take loans out. HCC was much more manageable, uh, and then USF. And now, I mean, USF is a wonderful school. Now it's, it's even more wonderful and it's, it's amazing the growth there. Um, and that was it. I applied to law school, took the LSAT. And I remember I was driving into Ebor City with my mother and I told her that uh, I didn't want to become an attorney and I wanted to get involved in politics.
What made you make that decision? Cause I, I mean, being an attorney can correlate easily into politics.
Well, I thought um, that I needed to be an attorney, have a legal background before pursuing anything politically. But then I saw there's folks elected that are from so many different backgrounds.
Yeah.
I go, you have, anybody can, can run for office. You know, you don't have to be an attorney, you don't have to be, you know, X, Y, Z. And that was it. I um, I ran for city council in twenty eleven for the first time and I lost. And I learned from my mistakes and my experience and I met a lot of wonderful people. And then I ran in twenty fifteen and narrowly won and then I've been elected twice since. So I'm in my third term now.
Amazing. That's awesome. So you chose to essentially skip a step and go straight into politics. Was this something you always wanted to do or did it literally go like you're a child, you want to be a lawyer all the way up until applying to law school?
No, when I was young, I would say, when I was like thirteen, fourteen, I wanted to go to medical school and become a heart surgeon. That was the goal. And there's a story behind that. But when I was sixteen, I was first um, inspired with politics beyond just studying American history. I love American history.
Yeah.
And um, but then I got really uh, interested in, in political stuff. So.
And you, and what year was this? Like who was in office at that time?
It was two thousand, it was during the presidential election in two thousand. It was the Gore-Bush election, which we didn't know who the president was.
Right.
The ballots and everything, so.
Well, Florida was the epicenter of all that, that whole fiasco.
We saw it with the, the ballots and the, the, they were paper ballots. So the hanging chads and the little, you know, when you punch in your vote.
Right.
They weren't getting counted correctly. But um, but that's it. But to take it further, when I was a teenager, I came to an event with my grandmother and my dad to Centennial Park around the corner from here. And I met Mayor Dick Greco. He was newly elected. This is like ninety-six, so he was in office now for a year in the second go-around. And um, nothing. I, I just, I met this gentleman, you might know him, and uh, ve- very charismatic. And I would ask my mom, I go, you know, what's the big deal with this guy? I'm thirteen, twelve, thirteen years old. And she goes, oh, he's got this, the way he talks to people and everything. And when he was young, I remember when he was mayor the first time.
Yeah.
You know, young and handsome and beautiful family and the way he, the way he talks to you, he makes you feel like you're the only person in the room. And um, anyways, as I got older, my grandmother was friends with uh, Evelyn Greco. And I remember as a kid answering the phone for my grandmother and she would be on the other end, uh, asking to speak to my grandmother. And they had, they maintained a friendship from, I guess when she worked at the bank. It wasn't from the hardware store, but she worked at the bank, I think here in Ebor, maybe Columbia Bank, back in the day. And um, they maintained this friendship and over the years I would see Mayor Greco pop in. And I said, that's what I want to be like because um, he was just a people person. He was a community-minded person. He was, you know, he remembered his roots and he would tell you about, you know, I grew up in the hardware store, I grew up in the hardware business. And then he ran for city council when he was, when he was young.
Twenty-six or eight.
In nineteen sixty-three, so sixty years ago, he got elected right before, right before John F. Kennedy's assassination. And that's another story. Cause I asked him, did you ever meet John F. Kennedy? And he said, no. But I saw, I was in the room with him at what was called the International Inn on the corner of West Shore and what is now Kennedy Boulevard. And I go, what was it like? And he said, he had this, he had this aura. He walked in and it was just like movie star charisma.
Yeah.
And here I am, listening to a gentleman that has that movie star charisma, telling me about somebody else that has, you know,
Right.
even, even greater charisma. And um, anyway, so when I, when I ran the second time for council in twenty fifteen, I was about the same age. Uh, I was thirty years old. Greco was thirty years old, twenty-nine, thirty years old uh, when he won, but four years later, he ran for mayor. And ran against a, a very popular, longtime political incumbent, Nick Nusio and won, and that was it. You know, and I mean, the rest is, the rest is history.
Right.
So uh, you know, I would look to that. And what was interesting is when I ran in twenty eleven, it was my first time running for office. But Mayor Greco ran for mayor and I got to see a different perspective. You know, candidate forums, seeing him on the campus, seeing what it was like.
Right.
You know, talking to people and whatnot. So it's very interesting and uh, and here I am.
So he, he made that amazing impression on you when you were young and, and you had carried that with you until you ran in twenty eleven.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
That's awesome. And then so, so in twenty eleven, what were some of those challenges you faced? And, and how did you shift and, and improve and ultimately win in two thousand fifteen?
So in twenty eleven, it was a very different Tampa. We were in the middle of the Great Recession. And you know, anybody can look at the, what real estate was, how people were leaving, how kids were graduating and moving away. You know, we weren't retaining our best and our brightest. Um, the, the mayor at the time had to make the tough decision of you know, cutting positions from the city. We were losing revenue because when you have.
Iorio?
Yes. When um, when you have so many vacant homes or homes in foreclosure, you know, they're not paying the utility bills, they're not getting their trash picked up. The communications tax, that's another thing. Cell phones have become, you know, predominant in communication. We would get uh, an amount of revenue from telephones, home phones, which we've lost that in the, I think it's in the hundreds of millions now, like two hundred and something million dollars in lost revenue because we don't collect the, we don't collect a cellphone tax like we could, would collect the, the communications tax.
Interesting.
There's a lot of things with how times have changed. So it's a very different Tampa.
Yeah.
So anybody that would have won for mayor would have had a very difficult uh, job in twenty eleven. Luckily, things turned around um, nationally. Uh, you, you see it in how strict lending is in comparison of how it used to be. You see that, you know, banks are, are changing, have changed their policies on how mortgages were being given out and how, you know, lenders would just give money out and, and more easily than now. So the Great Recession was uh, was a huge thing. But you know, ge- getting back to the point of what did I learn was, I'm glad that I didn't get elected in twenty eleven because it would have been a very difficult four years for anybody. So I came on in twenty fifteen, but I took the criticism that I got in twenty eleven and I applied it to, well, how can I do better? You know, how can I make better decisions? I didn't have much community involvement and people would say, well, what boards do you serve on? What do you do? What volunteer service do you do? So I got involved in the things that I was passionate about. Um, and then in twenty fifteen, I ran and uh, I faced an uphill battle because I had an opponent that had a lot of money. I wasn't a big fundraiser and I narrowly won by about a hundred and fifty-one votes. And it was very interesting because we had our election night party at a historic cigar factory in West Tampa over on Armenia and Columbus, the Garcia Vegas Cigar Factory.
Yeah.
Which is offices now.
Yeah, I studied for the LSAT there actually.
Oh.
I mean, I didn't, I ended up going to a semester of law school, but that's funny, yeah.
Yeah, so you know the building, but uh, my friend had a, his cowork space there. And um, it's interesting. I could tell you a whole story about.
Adam, right?
No.
No, what's his name?
It's, it's Coork Tampa, Chris.
Chris, that's right. I know Chris. He's the man. I don't know where I got Adam from.
We were there that night and we were way behind at the beginning. And as the votes kept getting tallied, it was closer and closer. And then we overcame the deficit and were ahead. We ended up being ahead a hundred and fifty-one votes.
Wow.
And when you win, the moment like victory was there, so many people started showing up that it was, it was amazing that they had opened the second floor, the overflow. Um, but it was a great night. So.
Bet it was. And, and especially, you know, going back over a decade or, or how long? How old were you, first of all, when you were elected in twenty fifteen?
Thirty.
That's amazing. So to be that young and, and have been inspired for over fifteen years, that probably felt like a dream come true.
You know, one of the first things somebody told me that night, a guy, a gentleman named Mark says, your life is totally different now.
Right.
And I go, okay, goes, well, you know, you, you, everybody watches you kind of thing. You know, now we, you know, you're on a, you, you go to public meetings in City Hall and now you do the business of the city. So it's um, it's, it's different, you know, as a, as a public official. But it's very rewarding because we can do a lot of good for the city. And we talked about, you know, you know, born and raised in Tampa. And I say born, raised and educated because I never left. You know, even as, when I was young, I loved Tampa. I go, where, where would I go? There are many beautiful places throughout the country, throughout the world, but Tampa is just such a good balance. And it's been so good to my family since they came here over sixty years ago, that it's just like, you know, this is a family. And I know people go, oh, you know, we're a fam- we're, it's, it feels like that when you
Right.
grow up around certain people and you're influenced by certain people, um, it's a good feeling. And Tampa's, although we're growing, we still have that Tampa flavor, that Tampa story. Uh, there's just so many good things.
That's why I started the show. I wanted to per- preserve that story, that history, that culture.
Yeah.
Share it with some of the people that have moved here and they might not know that story. I don't want that story to be lost.
No, because people come to Tampa, new people, and they go, Water Street is beautiful, the Riverwalk is beautiful. I want to tell them the story of what, what it used to be like, you know, what's, what Tampa's known for. You know, I love history and I love telling stories about the past. And many people are fascinated and they say, I didn't know that. I wouldn't have known that if you wouldn't have said it or directed me to this book or this website. There's just a lot of, Tampa has a beautiful story to tell and I, I hope we don't lose that. And, and we continue to share that with all the new people that move here so they can learn and appreciate and enjoy it as well.
And people want to know that and be a part of it too. New York has an identity and Atlanta has, all these cities have identities. And Tampa has one too. And I feel like when people live here, they want to learn that and be a part of it.
Yep.
So the first term on city council, you get elected, you're on a high, I mean, you probably can't believe it at the time and people are telling you all these sorts of things. What's day one? I mean, how, how does everything kind of transpire for you? And what are your thoughts at the time?
I was quiet for a long time and, you know, some people saw it as I was not engaged. It was, you know, but I was there, I was there to listen. So, you know, I spent time listening, learning the ropes. You know, I, I've watched so many city council meetings, I would have, I would just sit in, in the audience at city council meetings in the past. I served on other boards. I served on one specific city of Tampa board where we would meet in city council chambers and sit at the, at the same place. So, you know, for a while, I was, I was used to going to, to, to City Hall in some capacity, in a volunteer capacity. And I knew the folks that were on the board because we had campaigned together four years prior. So we weren't strangers. And uh, it was very comfortable. I worked with uh, Mayor Buckhorn for his last four, four years and we had a good working relationship. And now I work with Mayor Castor. You know, very different styles of, of leadership, but it's, it's, it's exciting. Every day's a new adventure. It's not always happy, it's not always positive because there are many tough decisions. But it's really a blessing to be able to serve the community in that capacity. And even on the hard days, I go, I'm glad that I'm here. I'm glad that I'm here because um, you know, I'm, I'm, in a, I'm in a way helping or giving back or helping to improve the city that I love. So it's, it's very rewarding. And people ask me, well, what's the best part of the job? It's when we can help somebody. It's their recycling or trash doesn't get picked up, or if we can get a road paved, or whatever it is, small or big, we're making some kind of positive uh, impact. And uh, and that's always a plus and, and, and something that I appreciate.
Yeah. And then two thousand fifteen to twenty twenty-three, Tampa, probably looking back, maybe felt like a small town in terms of the city government, right? What, what has been the difference between that first term and now your third? There's probably, what, ten times the challenges and a way bigger budget and everything seems to have compounded since then.
It's, it's grown a lot, it's changed a lot. We've seen the continued growth of social media and we see more people engaged, which I think is, is great. I'd rather be at a city council meeting that is full of individuals, that is, you know, tons of people wanting to talk at public comment. I like that.
Is that something that's shifted, like in twenty fifteen?
The meetings have gotten longer. Uh, there's just a lot more on the agendas, there's a lot more to discuss. But in a good way, because it shows that people are engaged and people care and that people take time out of their day to come down to city council. They come down to city hall to see how their government works, to, to speak what they want to speak about. That's important because we talk about voter turnout in city elections and it's generally low. Fifty years ago, it was like sixty percent voter turnout. Now it's ten, twelve percent, fourteen percent.
Yeah.
And you're thinking, city government, local municipal government is so impactful to our daily lives. You know, you would think that it would be packed every day and we would have meetings that would finish very, very quickly uh, years ago. Now we have meetings that last all day and into the night, but I'm glad because it shows that more people care, more people are engaged. So it is different from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-three. Uh, COVID changed the whole world. You know, I, I say we live in a post-COVID world, like the end of innocence was twenty nineteen, cause it's very, very different, you know, to now. But it's good. I mean, there's just a lot of growth in Tampa. Drive around, you see a lot of cranes, you see a lot of construction. You open the newspaper, well, you go online and read the newspaper and you see like, this is, this project, this developer, this investor. It wasn't like that, not that I can remember. You know, there were big issues, but it's like every day, every couple of days, it's like, this is coming. These, these folks are interested. This is gonna be built. Uh, and it's exciting. I'm glad to be here and witness, you know, and be a part of the process.
Hundred percent, yeah. We had on Hannah Webster with the City of Tampa Communications Department. They're in charge of social media and all that sort of thing. And she says that's kind of their goal too, is to engage the public. They've set up programs where people can comment and get information. Can you pull up the City of Tampa page? One hundred thirty-three thousand followers now. The, our um, as you probably know, our communications department has been given awards because of our social media presence. That's so important. And you feel like that has been a big part of why people have been attending meetings and asking questions and being more engaged?
Yeah, I, I, I think they do a very, very good job with social media. I mean, a hundred thousand plus followers and that's just on Instagram.
Right.
That is uh, that's nothing to, to, to scoff at. That's very impressive. Same with Twitter, same with Facebook. They're using all avenues. To engage with the public, engage with maybe younger audiences or new people. I'm very big on social media because I get my information, I can communicate. What's nice is you can, if you have something to say, you can post about it.
Right.
You know, and maybe you get five likes, maybe it goes viral. But everybody has a, a, a voice, whether it's a, a criticism, it's a compliment, whatever it is, people can be heard. And I think that's very, very important. Social media is good because even if it's not just folks that live here, but people that may be interested in moving here and they go, the Riverwalk, that's beautiful, Historic Seminole Heights, Ebor City, West Tampa, I live in that neighborhood, that's a beautiful house, that's the architectural style that I like. Or, you know, they have great schools. Oh, I'm a USF Bull or I'm a fan of USF, that's there. I mean, there's just so many, so many good things and they, I, I mean, just looking at this Instagram feed, the department does a very good job.
I mean, even on emergencies, Hurricane Idalia, providing updates from, hey, what time does my recycling get picked up on what days? And how is the city preparing for the hurricane coming up? Like it's, it's such a great outlet to, to reach out to the people that live and visit Tampa.
It is.
To me, over the last few presidential elections, it's gotten to be such a circus and a clown show. it's gotten to be such a circus and a clown show and and everyone is frustrated every four years. And I think it shows how important local elections are. And it seems like the, the population is shifting more towards local elections and realizing, wait a second. It's important who we elect as the mayor and it's important who we put on city council. I don't know that that was in the picture. You know, the last few decades, just because the national politics got all the attention.
Sure. I mean, people go out and vote for president or they go out and vote for governor, but a lot of people don't focus on the local stuff. The school board, the city council, the county commission races. They're very important and very impactful. You know, the president can have a press conference right now and and make major news, but will that affect you as much as you have a pothole in your road or your trash hasn't been picked up or your street is flooded? Those are local issues and all politics are local as the saying goes, but people, you know, it's important to focus on the local elections to get out and vote. Um, you know, I mean, I think we live in the greatest country in the world. And a lot of people have sacrificed and died for our country and for our freedoms. And one of our most sacred freedoms is the right to vote. Um, but you know, we have early voting, we have vote by mail, we have day of voting. I mean, there's we want to make it as convenient as possible, but we're not seeing, at least on the local level, the numbers of uh individuals coming out to vote.
Yeah, I hope it continues to improve. My grandfather told me that when he was first elected in the late nineteen sixties. I want to say it was sixty or seventy thousand people voted and today the number is the same. It's about the same amount of people, isn't it?
No. City of, City of Tampa elections come out in the teens. Between ten and fifteen percent is what the voter turnout is.
Oh, but I mean, the number of people, like sixty thousand people, is that wrong?
I don't, I have to look at the numbers. I've only looked.
Can you pull that up Tyler? See if you could find that. I, I think his point though, whatever the numbers were, was that the voter turnout, like the same amount of people vote, meaning Tampa has a population of almost four hundred thousand people. And no more people vote today than they did in the nineteen sixties when the population was.
The supervisor of election has historical voter turnout, but I don't know if it still goes back to the nineteen sixties. It used to, but they updated the site.
Guido, there you go. Elections Florida, I think it said thirty-two thousand. So what does it say?
Election date, voters, two hundred and forty thousand, ballots counted twenty-five thousand. So that's
Five.
Roughly ten percent.
Horrible. Kind of a shame really, but but I think like what we're saying. The power of social media, the power of the internet, people are believing that your local voice matters more than anything. So I hope those numbers increase.
Well, I mean, it's not only that, but every vote counts. Another council member, when he got elected in twenty sixteen in a special election. He won by sixty-five or seventy-five votes. I won by a hundred and fifty-one votes. So when people say, oh, it doesn't matter, my vote doesn't count. I promise you, as I've witnessed it and experienced it, your vote counts.
Yeah.
And people have won by even smaller margins. People have won by ten votes, less than that historically in the city of Tampa. So every vote counts. Um, you know, I just encourage people to come out and vote. And and again, the issues that happen at the municipal level will, you know, affect folks greatly, like this tax increase.
Mm-hmm.
There you go.
Right.
You know?
And then for city council, obviously for President of the United States, you can only do two terms. Um, and then how does that work for city council? Can you just keep running and get elected and be on council forever?
You, you can keep jumping around, but starting twenty twenty-seven, once you get elected, I believe it's um, we changed it to sixteen years total, two eight-year terms, and then you have to stop.
Um, now, why would that be? Why, why make the change?
To, to give others opportunity to, to uh run.
Sixteen years is a long time.
Is it sixteen years? We, it was a, it was a charter change. Um, that was proposed and then, uh, but it doesn't go into effect till next time.
Hmm.
So I'm going into year, I've already been there eight years going into nine. You know, with this term, it would put me at twelve. And if I were to run and get reelected, it puts me at sixteen. So I wouldn't, I would, I would not be affected, but at the same time, sixteen years is a long time.
It is a long time. Yeah. Well, I guess that makes sense, although if the people want one person for an extended period of time.
I mean, incumbents win and incumbents lose. There's not a foolproof thing. Oh, he's been there forever.
Right.
It doesn't matter. I mean, if if people come out to vote, you know, they can sway elections. So so that's it. I mean, you've had, there are city council members that have served a long time, not consecutively. They've come, they've gone and come back. Uh, and others that were there, you know, for years and years and years and years. But I mean, we have to look at where people as engaged and interested in running for office as it is now. Now you see thirty candidates in an election cycle. It's um, yeah, it's, which is good, you know, people are interested and want to do their part in the community and serve and I applaud them for it.
Yeah, absolutely. The last uh mayoral race this year was surprising to me because Castor essentially ran unopposed. I mean, right? How, how many candidates were in this last election?
There was a write-in candidate, uh, and then there was the mayor.
Right.
Um, in twenty nineteen, we had five or six candidates.
Mm-hmm.
In twenty fifteen, Mayor Buckhorn was elected. He had a write-in candidate, but he was reelected. Twenty eleven, we had quite a few candidates, five or six then. Uh, two thousand seven, I believe Mayor Iorio was reelected without opposition. There may have been a write-in.
So there seems to be a cycle with this thing.
Twenty, two thousand three. Um, there were quite a few people running for mayor. The last time an incumbent was defeated was nineteen sixty-seven.
My grandfather.
Yes.
Nick Nusio.
And that was a pretty hefty spread. It wasn't a close race. And then they had a rematch in seventy-one. And Greco won again. So, yeah, it's been since nineteen sixty-seven that an incumbent has been defeated.
So based on that, I would imagine the next race in four years is gonna be pretty heavy. Yeah, it's gonna be very busy.
Busy.
So I just noticed and I saw on the Instagram, pull back up Tyler, the new Tampa city center in East Tampa. Let's talk about that. You mentioned that was a hundred plus million dollar project.
Yeah.
Now, explain kind of why this was necessary. I mean, we have a beautiful city hall. We've got that downtown property. Why do we need this huge hundred plus million dollar center in East Tampa?
So not all of the offices or all of the departments are in those buildings. Old City Hall is much smaller. City Council's on the third floor with the clerk's office. You have the legal department on the floors going up to the eighth floor.
Yeah.
Um, we don't have the space to accommodate everything and then
Up Tyler.
And then in the Tampa Municipal Office Building next door, there are some departments there. Um,
It's right there.
So the departments that were relocated, some of the departments that were relocated to the new Hannah Center.
Hmm.
They were renting space. So on North Boulevard, one office building was a rental. Um, Lemon Street, which is by West Shore Mall, that we were paying rent and we were paying a lot of money in rent. So it was to consolidate and put everybody in one location. So make it a one-stop shop.
Right.
And we're not paying rent. It's real estate that we would own. Um, but it's, what's nice with this building is um, there's a lot of space for growth to accommodate as the city grows. If city council needs to go to an emergency location, um, like we did with COVID, we had to go because of social distancing and every, social distancing and everything. We went to the convention center, but there's uh space there if city council has to relocate temporarily uh to that era, area. Um, it's, it's a major investment in the community, right there on Hannah, which would be east of Nebraska. Uh, it's a lot of money, but we also have to look at how much money we're saving and paying rent. I mean, I know the rent from what I calculated, maybe my mon- my numbers might be a little bit off. But it was like a million something dollars a year in rent. And that's, you know, it's throwing money away when this is something that we could we could own, we could grow and adapt with. Uh, and it's really a, a, it is a space for the community. There's a church across the street. Um, you can go, we can go there right now and sit outside, you know, and do work on our laptop.
Yeah.
You know, and whatever it is, but it's very inviting and it's very welcoming. Um, and that's it. It's one of the largest investments made by the City of Tampa. Uh, the next largest investment would be two hundred and fifty-one million dollars, which was to address the flooding throughout the city in twenty sixteen. And then the pipes program, which is to replace all the aging stormwater infrastructure and wastewater pipes in the city. That's in the billions. So this ranks up there in the top five most, uh, let's say top ten, but I think top five most uh expensive endeavors, well, largest investments in the, in the community. Uh, nearby is the new Tampa, I'm sorry, the, the East Tampa Recreation. Oh, then the East Tampa Park, which that's forty-something million dollars. Probably the largest park investment in the city of Tampa's history.
Pull that up Tyler, amazing.
There's, I don't think there's anything there on social media because it hasn't broken ground yet. But that's gonna be the next big endeavor. And so when we talk about that one point nine billion dollar budget, these items are in there.
Right.
And and that's why it's ballooned so much because over the last eight years since I started. Um, yeah, that's showing Hannah unfinished, but the park is um, is, is farther away from there. That, we don't have any images to show of, of construction yet. But
So this sounded very necessary to efficiency and organization of the city services and expansion and I mean, uh, there's really not a lot of room downtown for the city to expand. Has this been in the works for a long time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, before this.
Pre-Caster.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's amazing and it's in a great location too. Hopefully it can provide that neighborhood with, with some growth and opportunities and uh, you know, I don't know if that's why the location was picked, but I can't imagine it, it wouldn't have an effect. Like you said, you can go there and hang out. It's a nice place. There's a church across the street and how far away is this new park you're talking about?
Um, the park, I'm looking at the map.
I mean, you're talking a fifty million dollar park. This seems.
You would have to go out uh into East Tampa. If you go east of there, I don't have the exact uh address there. It's, it's.
Like out towards the Hard Rock kinda?
No, 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 no. It's in East Tampa. If you look up like Fair Oaks, Fair Oaks Complex, it'll take you there if you, if you do a search on that.
We used to live in the Fair Oaks down on um Dale Mayberry. That's in South Tampa.
Yeah, no, no, different one. This is in East Tampa. So it would, no, not Fair, Fair Oaks Park Community Center, second one down.
Parks are so important to a city. Buckhorn's Park, he did. The, the River Walk Park is incredible. I love that place. It's beautiful.
The one at Julian Lane?
Yeah, that was an expensive project.
That was used uh BP money, BP settlement money when we had the oil spill. Uh, part of that was used for that, for that part. That was a thirty-six million dollar investment.
Thirty-six million. So this new park is fifty million.
It's in the forties now. So it would be the largest investment for a park and one of the largest investments in East Tampa.
Amazing. What's the community feedback on something like that? Because that's a big number for a park.
There've been several community meetings with the, with the develop, not the developer, but the, the designer of the park, the architect. Um, the engineering firm and uh they've received feedback of what they want to see, whether it's like a senior center. Whether it's uh more educational towards the kids, after-school programs. Um, yeah, it's, it's, it's been a lengthy process. Um, but it's a good process because, you know, we've gone out to the community and uh and asked feedback from folks before it's developed, not just here's a park, no matter what it costs, but here's a park. No, we want to know what you want because it's your community and your amenity and your investment as taxpayers. So.
It goes beyond voting. Like we were talking earlier about in community engagement. It goes beyond who you vote for. Like your voice matters, not only your vote, but your voice matters too. And so, so if a bunch of people come up and say, we want a pickleball court, the city's willing to accommodate that.
Yeah. Pickleball's been very popular and we've seen the uh
That's awesome.
That grow throughout the city. Um, so yeah, who would have thought pickleball? Pickleball is, is, is just the one of the most popular uh sports and people are requesting courts and they want to see, you know, I mean, and they're in use, they're busy.
They're super busy.
You know, so.
So up on North Boulevard, Julian B Lane, if you go any time of day, those pickleball courts are packed with people. People are waiting on benches to use those things, man.
Yep, I see it.
That's nice when a city makes an investment, people actually use it. I, I, my dad would get frustrated sometimes because the city would, you know, build a park. He's, he's kind of a cynical dude, but you know, we, the city would do something and people wouldn't use it and it's like, oh, people throw their hands up. On that note about a budget, these are big numbers, a hundred plus million dollar city center, fit, you know, forty plus million dollar park. When people talk about, well, why would they spend forty plus million dollars on a park? They could solve the homeless crisis with that. People, people tend to think that every dollar is the same. Wh- what's an easy way to explain that to the public? I mean, how does the budget really work?
There's a lot of moving parts to the budget, but it, it also depends on who the mayor is and their priorities. Cause you know, the next mayor can come in and say, my goal is to solve the houseless homeless situation in Tampa. Pave the roads and build the sidewalks. And that would, that would take priority.
Wouldn't any mayor say, I want to, I want to do all of that. Plus I want less traffic. I want this, I want that. I mean, wouldn't any mayor come in and want to fix everything?
It's, it's, it's politics, you know, what, what someone says on the campaign trail is different from because when, once you get into the job, it's, may not be what, what is expected, but the mayor being in this strong mayor form of government. Um, you know, if their priorities are to push certain things through, then that will take precedent, you know, and and as they craft the budget, they'll say, I want to get this done. How do we get there? Of course, they would need, um, you know, city council approval and whatnot, but yeah, we could have a future mayor say, I want to pave all the roads. I don't think that's gonna happen because it's a lot of roads and it's a lot of money, but they can prioritize and say, I want to invest in our roads as we, as we never have before, or in our road sidewalks and pedestrian. Um, uh, safety, pedestrian, bicycle safety, or say, and in that, because it all falls into place, I want to help with congestion. And they can pu- push for, you know, new public transportation, more public transportation, or they can say, how do we move traffic? Whether it's synchronized uh traffic signals, whether it's uh, you know, reworking roads that that's another longer, longer story, but prioritizing the movement of people and the safety of people. Um,
So there's a level of creativity almost at play when it comes to tackling these issues.
Yeah, you can have a mayor say, I want to be the parks mayor. I want to be like this mayor has been the infrastructure mayor. With the pipes program, uh, with the flooding, addressing the flooding, which really started with Mayor Buckhorn. Um, there's, you know, and then our, our road bu- budget has increased and, you know, I mean, there's a lot of positive things, but you know, remember that the time is limited, four years, eight years if they get reelected. Um, the funding, the money, funds that have not been committed, uh, the growth, the income. Uh, there's another thing, the CIT, Community Investment Tax, which is due to expire in a few years. Maybe that gets renewed, maybe it doesn't. And if it doesn't get renewed, then we're gonna have a problem with funding in the future because it's a lifeline, which this is a sales tax. But it would have to be voted on by the county commission to be put on a ballot, to be approved by uh, voters in the, in Hillsborough County. And then the county decides what percentages of that funding go to the city, which is not just Tampa, but it's Tampa, it's Plant City, it's Temple Terrace, it's Hillsborough County. Um, and how that was originally implemented in nineteen ninety-six was in that CIT was funding for what is now Raymond James Stadium. It failed and then it was brought back onto the ballot and it passed barely by a very small number, but it included the stadium. And there was discussions then of the bucks are gonna leave and there was a, a switch in ownership right before that in the mid nineties. Um, so I don't know what happens. If, if it gets put on the ballot, if it gets renewed, the voters might say, no. And when I say renewed is our sales tax in Hillsborough County is at seven point five percent. Renewing it would ju- at the same numbers would just keep it seven point five percent.
Which is the highest in the state, correct?
Um, I'd, I'd have to look. I mean, the state sets it at six percent and then the seven and a half percent, that one percent, one and a half percent extra is the surtax.
Hmm.
That is levied in Hillsborough County. So.
Even if the voters got rid of that, we would still be at six?
No, because you have uh Hillsborough County School. There's another one there. It would, if, if the half cent sales tax of the CIT doesn't get renewed, it would drop us down to seven percent.
Oh, okay.
So it's not a big difference. And remember, forty percent of that sales tax is paid for uh people that visit Hillsborough County.
Right.
So we get a lot of bang for our buck. Uh, so we'll see. I mean, that's a discussion that's gonna be had at the county commission. But it's a lifeline because it provides so much money annually for thirty years. Uh, that comes to the city that we can use for, um, you know, police and fire. We can use for roads. We can use for so many improvements. But again, it's, it has to pass the voters, it has to pass the county, then the voters. Uh, and then you have to have uh the priority of, it has to be priorities of the mayor to say, whoever the mayor is, we want to do this with this money. We want to allocate it to this or dedicate it to that.
And it has to get through opposition, right? Because Hillsborough County passed an extra transportation tax that got shut down by the Florida Supreme Court. So it has to cross that hurdle too.
There's that. I mean, hopefully folks see it as it's business as usual and we're just continuing with the seven and a half percent. And pushing the benefits of it because you have to show people uh what they're getting for their money, you know?
Anyone driving the streets around here, I think realizes we need that extra money.
Exactly. And if it's marketed as we're gonna pave our roads and we really have to dedicate the money for it. I'm talking about future councils and mayors have to say, this is what it was marketed and, and pushed on, roads and sidewalks and public safety.
So is there almost a level of trust the current council and mayor and administration is putting into future administrations? So they, a future administration could change that. You guys just. So they, a future administration could change that. You guys just have to set a precedent or how does that exactly?
Not if it's if it's money that's bonded and that we we know we're committed to, that's that, you know, if we're committed to thirty years in payments or whatever it is. A future mayor is not gonna, you know, tha- tha- that's not something that they can't change because we have these commitments, but the future mayor can say. Future money that's coming in, I want it dedicated to this, or how do we fund this? So when we bond something. If we are to bond something, we say, okay, there's X amount of money coming in with the CIT, for example. You know, they look at it in five year intervals and and in those intervals of, you know, they dedicate it for five years. Then those five years come up and how do they dedicate, you know, we have.
Right.
Twenty million dollars coming in, let's say that's just a number throwing throwing out, we can. Commit that money towards building fire stations. We can commit that towards paving these roads. We commit commit that to hiring more police officers to whatever it is, so. Yeah, it's just up to the the future leadership and what they want to do with it. I believe in. Do what is necessary, you know, wants and needs, um, and then focus on, cause people complain about their roads or lack of sidewalks or crumbling sidewalks and crumbling.
Which are valid, it's true.
Yeah, and that's what we should really focus on is the absolute necessities.
Yeah, and so if a mayor did want to come in and say, I want there to be no more potholes in the city and we're really gonna push the roadways. Is it even po- I mean, what kind of money are we talking about to fix the roads in the city? It would be billions of dollars, correct?
It would be, it would be billions of dollars to do everything.
Yeah, like to really put a put fix everything the way it needs to be.
But with the stormwater capital improvement projects, which it's a thirty year project. Fixing the flooding, like Dale Mabry and Henderson has repaved that intersection there because they they updated the stormwater, so I haven't seen it flood yet. Cause it's historically a very bad area, but that area is paved, that small area. When we talk about the pipes program, there are projects almost twenty years out. That they have to tear up the roads and replace the pipe and when they tear up the road and replace the pipe, they repave it, so. We can look at what roads are gonna be torn up because we have to pave, so that's already budgeted with the pipes program or the stormwater. And then what other roads are not on that stormwater replacement or flooding replacement that we can pave.
So you're kind of piggybacking and coordinating off other projects the city's already doing. That makes sense.
So if pipes and stormwater paves fifteen roads, we say, okay, well, the city, we have to figure out the money for. To pave the other five roads, you know, whatever it is to 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 get to where we need to be. It could be done. Uh, maybe not everything and maybe not in four years or eight years, but why not tackle it? Some of our roads are so awful. You know, that I don't remember them being paved in my lifetime, or I remember them getting paved twenty five, thirty years ago. And it's just like, the problem we have is the rain and standing water and. The rain does a lot of damage and when you have a pothole and you fill it, a bad storm can wash it right out, so. Properly paving makes a difference instead of just patching the road. There's temporary fixes.
Anyone could name ten plus roads that need dramatic help. Um, that's that's for dang sure. I mean, we've we've seen in Ebor City, even on Seventh Avenue, that all that probably all needs to get fixed up and. Let's talk about the brick streets. Is it advantageous to redo some of those brick roads or would we pave over it? What's kinda, what's the less expensive way?
I'm sup- it's expensive to re-brick. So we've looked at uh in the last year, not even the last year, less than that. Uh, re-bricking Seventh Avenue.
Yeah.
And that was part of urban renewal in the nineteen sixties where the mayor at the time, Nucio. Uh, in the modernization through the urban renewal program, which we had an urban renewal office in the city of Tampa until nineteen seventy four. The bricks were pulled up and the streetcar tracks were were pulled up that were on Seventh Avenue.
Yep.
The problem with that is we didn't just pave over Seventh, cause a lot of streets are paved over with asphalt and there's brick underneath. We tore up the brick roads, so there's, there are no brick roads other than those intersections that you see where they have brick crosswalks.
Quite a few of those, right?
Yes, in Ebor City and they're they're expensive. I believe it was like twenty thousand dollars in intersections.
Well, even coming off Davis Islands, that that's all brick, kinda in Hyde Park right there.
Yeah, there's a lot of existing brick, but.
And what do you do? Can you even take asphalt off of the historic?
Yeah, you can mill it. I've been told no by the powers that be. And then, but then I've watched it get done.
So how much Guido have you experienced on that note where? You're 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 an ambitious and creative guy. You want what's best for the city. That's a really good example, right? In your head, you're thinking, well, brick roads are historic and beautiful and the powers to be, whether it's a. Large business or people in politics are saying something can't be done, but you know it can be done. How much of that do you come across?
Uh, very little.
Yeah.
You know, I would say ninety five percent success rate of yes and a five percent. Uh, unsuccessful rate of, no, we just can't do it, you know, and it just depends, I mean. You know, depends who you talk to in power. If it's not their priority or they don't want to deal with it, they're they're not gonna support it. But um, yeah, like with stormwater, you know, when you have layers and layers of asphalt. And you're you're shrinking the opening of a drainage, a stormwater drain, right? The water has nowhere to go, whereas, and I and I use the example of like Grand Central and Kennedy where the Oxford Exchange is at. Because Grand Central is, they 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 maintain the name there, but that's brick back there. And if you look at the stormwater openings, they're the original and you can fit probably about the height of an iPhone, if not more. The uh stormwater opening. Now, if you go to Kennedy and Kennedy near Rome, you see where it's paved. And that stormwater opening is smaller and smaller because of the layers of asphalt. And so you say, well, if they didn't, if we don't have all this asphalt, or if they excavated it or opened it up properly, the water would drain. Oh, no, you gotta do the whole stormwater system. Maybe it's an issue with, you know, basic science saying the hole is not big enough, the water's just gonna. And if trash gets stuck in there, water's not gonna flow and it floods. So I, you know.
You would think that's a no brainer. I mean, you would think that the the people who pave the road would think, well, we probably shouldn't cover the storm drain.
No, and and folks would disagree with me saying, no, we gotta redo the system. We gotta do this project. I'm not an engineer. I'm not gonna continue fighting with them, but sometimes you think. Well, it's it seems like it's basic without having to spend so much money that we can do this or that. Um, but in regards to the question of like, is there pushback? There has been, but a very small amount. And I'm talking about, you know, working with other folks in the city. I I believe in. Uh, mutual respect, being respectful to people. Uh, you'll never see me at a city council meeting berating somebody. Criticizing, yelling at staff, anything like that. Um, it just, it hurts morale and. Well, how would that yelling at somebody, how would that encourage them to do better? Some people believe in that philosophy. I don't. I think that, you know, you can get a lot a lot farther just being nice.
Yeah.
And asking nicely and 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 that's it, but it it all comes down to communication, so. Yeah, what do you do in the situation where, sometimes it's just no, but it's it's not always the case. And it's just how you approach it and how you address a situation. And that's it now and remember, I can't do anything by myself. I need three other votes on the city council. So I can propose the best idea ever and my colleagues don't agree with me and that that I idea is dead. So, you know, you have to sell your idea, convince others, you know, how do you get three other votes, you know? Show, you know, push the position that you're taking and then the idea and then and then you go from there, but you don't always win.
And a vote like that, is that a public vote? I mean, anyone can attend this vote and listen to?
Oh, yeah, it's, everything happens in the sunshine, meaning in a publicly noticed meeting, meaning anybody can walk in.
So is a big part of trying to get a project like that done, creating public support and getting people to show up for you that believe in what?
Talking about re-bricking the streets?
Sure, as an example, or something that you really believe in that maybe is not brought to light to the rest of the council.
So what's interesting is we are, there are CRA districts, Community Redevelopment Area, or Community Redevelopment Agency, which has Community Redevelopment. Areas and we're in the Ebor City. There's Ebor One and Ebor City Two, which means a certain amount of tax revenue. Uh, goes into, not into the city's general budget, but into the CRA district. And it can only be spent within that district, so we've looked at using CRA money to address the bricking. And the issue we have is our brick supply in the city has dwindled over the years because the bricks were sold off. In the past to other other places like Winter Park. Is it Winter Park or Winter Ha- Winter, yeah, anyways.
Winter Park has beautiful brick streets.
Yeah, and and those are, a lot are Tampa 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 bricks. And uh, but that's, I mean, I can't go in the past and change it.
Right.
But.
Well, what, I mean, do you want to see brick streets or asphalt?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
To me, asphalt has more pros in the sense of it's better to drive on. I'm sure it's more economical, probably saves gas, right? Tires spin easier on brick, et cetera, et cetera.
But we're talking about Seventh Avenue in Ebor City, brick buildings going back to, I mean, Ebor City is founded in eighteen eighty six, even though it was developing before that. But wouldn't it be beautiful to have Seventh Avenue in brick as it used to be? Not only that, people tend to drive more slowly on brick. The water tends to drain a little bit better when it's brick, because it's, you know, it's blocks the line, it's not gonna just, you know, completely absorb, but. The water uh issue, it'll drain uh better and it's just more aesthetically pleasing, so people come in and go, oh, the historic district, look at this beautiful brick street. So there's a, there's a lot of pluses, but I'm talking, when I talk about re-bricking, it's Seventh Avenue. When I talk about other neighborhoods, and not everybody supports brick. You know, this is gonna mess up my alignment. This is gonna mess up my car, it's gonna. But there are areas in the city where brick streets are are there and they're, when there's a pothole, you see the pothole and there's bricks underneath Bay Shore Boulevard. I've seen potholes there and the brick is right there underneath and we have a. A speeding issue on Bay Shore, even though we reduced the speed limit, we re- we've added pedestrian crosswalks and whatnot. What if it was all brick? You tend to drive more slowly on it, which is good for pedestrians, which is good, you know, for managing speed, so. There's a lot of pluses, but there's, I I I've not heard a discussion about Bay Shore Boulevard. Ebor City, Seventh Avenue, yes.
Well, you bring up an interesting point there. I mean, Bay Shore Boulevard has been notorious over the years in my lifetime. I was born in the nineties. I mean, there's been a lot of tragedies on Bay Shore with car accidents and pedestrians.
Yes.
And if bricking it would be more beautiful and slow people down, maybe that's a good thing. I think the biggest question though is cost. Did you say that re-bricking is more expensive than just regular asphalt paving?
We don't have enough bricks for Seventh Avenue. That's the problem, so we have to go to a brick manufacturer. And there are those that make historic brick that looks old and original and then there's like the modern paver that looks like brick, but it's.
So the, but but the cost discrepancy between, hey, do we asphalt or do we brick? It's not that there's a huge difference there, it's more so.
Oh, it's cheaper to asphalt.
It's cheaper to asphalt, but that's not the limiting factor necessarily.
For Ebor City, you know, it's a project of restoring it to what it used to look like. Now, if you have brick under Bay Shore and you say, oh, I see a pothole and I see the bricks, the issue there is milling. Which means removing the asphalt and some people will say, you can't do it. And then other people, you know, these are, you know, political people will say no, but the people that actually do the work say, of course you get. It's a lot of work, you know, but uh but it can be done. And brick is much easier to maintain, cause you don't have the potholes, you don't have, you know, like asphalt, asphalt washes away and crumbles and cracks. But you have brick streets that they've looked the same for over a century, so.
Why do some politicians, this probably isn't even a local problem, but why do some of them say, no, you can't do it? Like I remember in the twenty nineteen mayoral race. When the Ray Stadium was potentially gonna be coming to Tampa, there were some people running that said, I wouldn't give a dime to this project or no, 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 no. Why do some politicians say no? Do you find that's the case with a lot of people here locally?
Uh, it just, there's different factors. Maybe they truly believe, you know, in not subsidizing stadiums and that public dollars should go. That is a a genuine belief of some people. Other people might say it for for political reasons, because, oh, that's that's highly unpopular. You know, no one wants to deal with that. Um, I don't know. I mean, everybody's, everybody's different. Sometimes it's politics, sometimes it's how they genuinely feel.
Yeah.
Uh, and then there's others that say, you know, absolutely, fund the stadium.
So you get a mixed bag of people that always try to say yes and make something happen, realists maybe, and then people that are just hard no.
Don't, don't write checks that you can't cash. Don't over deliver and be everything to everybody. You know, it's better to be honest and say, I don't know. I haven't thought about that. I don't agree with that, or yes, I agree with that. Um, but again, in campaigns, you'll hear a little bit of everything.
Yeah.
But at the end of the thing, at the end of the day, the thing is to to do the right thing. It's not gonna be the most popular thing, but just do the right thing, uh, whatever that is, whatever the situation, whatever the issue is, but you know, as we're looking here on the screen.
Yeah.
Brick is beautiful and it's not only that, it's the granite curbs there, so. Those are historically accurate. There've been modifications over the years, but imagine Seventh Avenue looking like this, and if you pull up old pictures. Of Seventh Avenue before the nineteen sixties, and there are photos of the bricks being pulled up in the sixties. Um, but imagine what Ebor City, you know, and Seventh Avenue would look like with the brick restored. That Italian Club building is over a hundred years old. Uh, that was there when the brick streets, the building next door was there.
Probably the building we are in right now was here.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at this brick wall, you know, our ancestors, you know, uh. Put these bricks together, not mine, my family came here in nineteen, in the early nineteen sixties, but think about it, you know, so many Tampa family names that. They either worked in the cigar factories or they laid the bricks of our streets. Uh, you know, they they built this community. And we should all be very proud of that. Um, but Ebor City is such a special and unique place. Because the, to me, and this is something your grandfather told me, there's no place in in the world like Tampa, there's no place in the world like Ebor City. And if you look at the s- the story of Ebor City, built by immigrants, you had Sicilians, Cubans, Spaniards, Italians, everybody coexisting. You had the original live, work, play. They worked in the cigar factories, they had a house, they didn't need a car, they had the streetcar. They had the mutual aid societies like the Cuban Club, the Centro Estudiano, Centro Español, Italian Club, they had healthcare. And then if you look at the photos of the cigar factories, it's women and men working together. There was a different kind of equity. Uh, in in inequality in the area back in the day when when we didn't, we didn't really have that. Um, but again, when people visit Tampa, I always take them to Ebor City.
Oh, my gosh.
I take them down Bay Shore, I take them to Seminole Heights, I take them to West Tampa, I take them to Sulfur Springs. It's there's, Tampa's got so many beautiful places and I'm I'm always so proud to just say, hey, let me show you around. You know, and we're driving around and 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 you see people's faces light up and they go, wow, what's this?
Yeah.
You know, what it, this reminds me of Bourbon Street in New Orleans and I go, it's Ebor City. You know, it's, I I see the balconies and the historic buildings, but Ebor City is unique and it's such a wonderful collection of historic buildings.
I'm a sucker for it. I love Tampa history and some of my favorite podcasts are with Max Herman from Ebor City Walking Tours. Do you know Max? He's an awesome Tampa historian. He knows so much about the city, right, Tyler? He's a, he's a cool dude. Um, and he's shared with me some incredible stories of Ebor City and it's inspiring and to see it paved, you know, we're looking at this picture right now. It is kind of a shame and so you mentioned they paved it with a federal grant. Sounds like we have more federal money that's going towards re-bricking it? Is that a federal program?
There are programs out there, but the difference with urban renewal is is you had urban renewal, which was a national program, which was. Out with the old and with the new.
Yeah.
You had the interstate coming through. The interstate divided Ebor City in two and that was post nineteen fifty eight or so with the Federal Highway Act. The Federal Highway Act came earlier in the fifties, but we felt the brunt in Seminole Heights, West Tampa and Ebor City. And then we had what was called model cities, so you would have a blighted area. And you would say, as a government, you know, we're gonna demolish this area, it's blighted and you would get federal money to rebuild it. So through model cities, through urban renewal, one of the pluses with urban renewal, and I'm a very big critic of urban renewal. Because it did a tremendous amount of damage that we're feeling today. We have a community college built in Ebor City. HCC, I think. Is built in nineteen sixty eight, nineteen seventy, around there in Ebor City and you go, well, we brought education. You know, to the area in a, in a new way, meaning the community college. Um, you know, that was a plus.
So it's an amazing anchor to this neighborhood.
Yes, but then you look at the, much of the rest of Ebor City and so many houses were uh demolished, so many buildings. Cigar factories, brick buil- buildings that were made to last, you know, died within fifty years, died after a half a century. And they haven't been replaced. There's a lot of parking lots. There's a lot of empty spaces and you go, wow, it wasn't always like that. It was more of a. Real neighborhood, real community, and it's coming back to that because Ebor City is becoming that neighborhood again. But it's very different. I mean, like, this is a modern structure across from the Cuban Club, which is a historic structure. So you see the difference, you know, Palm Avenue, um. There there's a Cuban Club, you know, over a century old. Then you see Ebor Square farther down, Vicente Martinez Ebor's office is still there. You can go in, uh, that's a well-preserved building. Uh, there's just so many changes. And I remember a gentleman that died about four years ago, who lived in Seminole Heights, but spent his time in Ebor City. In like the nineteen thirties and forties, he goes, you know, we came back to Ebor City forty years later, after we moved out. And we asked ourselves, well, what what happened? We happened, you know, they moved out, urban renewal, you know, houses were demolished. They went to other parts of the city and Ebor City for for a while was forgotten, but now we've, we're experiencing this new ren- Ebor City for, for a while was forgotten, but now we've, we're experiencing this new Renaissance. Especially with like the Gas Works Project and all these other things. Um, you're gonna see Ebor City. With Water Street, with downtown, with Gas Works, it's gonna be.
Amazing, what's happening?
I think it's gonna be even more beautiful than it was before. Actually. I don't know if it could ever be that beautiful, but it'll be. It'll be the.
It'll be a new chapter.
The, but it'll be the, the, the real true Renaissance.
Yeah, finally. Now, how to, it's, it's kinda hard to predict, there's a great picture Tyler, right there of someone finding brick under an asphalt road. But historic buildings, um, we've seen so many historic buildings being torn down, so many people are upset. What is the city doing to protect historic buildings or what can the city do to protect them?
Buildings can be designated as historic landmarks, either local or nationally. Ebor City is a National Historic Landmark District. West Tampa is also a historic district, but in a different capacity. Um, you can. Put buildings on the National Register, they can also be taken off. There was a building on North Franklin Street in downtown that doesn't exist. That was on the list thirty years ago and thirty years ago it was. It was demolished and it's been. It's been vacant since, I believe it, no, it might be part of a park. But, um, yeah, there's ways to protect it, but not everybody wants to protect historic buildings. Or they can say it's cost prohibitive to restore it and bring it back to, uh, its former glory. I mean, we're talking, brick is expensive.
Yeah.
Do, do, working with brick, restoring, all that, um. You know, i- i- it costs a lot of money.
But we're, but we're talking about our, our history being erased and urban renewal and, and some of these programs in. The past, you know, fifty years or so that have unfortunately taken away our history and so here we are now. And the building where the first watch was, you know, that new condo is going up and they demolished that, so. W- what can the council do or the public do, if anything, to tell a developer like, hey, don't do that? This is an important building to the city and to our history.
They have private property rights, I mean, that's, of course, they have that, but, um. You know, the council can take certain steps, there's other boards, there's the Historic Preservation Board. Um, and that building that you were mentioning in downtown, that was a complicated process and then there was, um. There was a church in Seminole Heights over, um. Over on Hillsborough Avenue in Nebraska that was demolished. And people recognized the spire, you know, the steeple and everything from the interstate, it was one of the, you knew where you were at when you saw it and then you saw the Sulfur Springs. Water Tower, but, um.
I mean, that's, that's a local Tampa historic landmark to me was that Baptist church.
Yep, I mean, there's so many buildings, but. I hope that we've learned. To some capacity, I mean, cause if it was up to me, I would preserve everything and say.
Yeah.
Why? You go to Europe and there's buildings that are hundreds of years old.
Exactly.
And older and I go, here we are, it's like fifty years is. You're pushing it, you know, I mean, there are buildings that. Were erected in the seventies that are gone.
Yeah, pull that up Tyler, right there. One Tampa demolition begins. You know, look, I mean, that was a gorgeous historic building, we'll never get something like that back and obviously I understand property rights, I'm in real estate, I own property. Um, but at the same time. How do other cities in Europe get it right? How do places like Boston and New York preserve their buildings? And for some reason they're being torn down here and I understand it's complicated. It sounds like what you're saying is. It's the public's job to get these buildings on the list, not necessarily council. Council could stop a project like that, but then wouldn't we just get sued and lose?
It ends up in the courts and a judge can overturn a decision, so it's not a guarantee, well, council did, you know, it gets more complicated legally. Um.
But, but essentially council wouldn't step in on a project like this, specifically this one? Because you would think the property owner would win in the end.
I don't, I don't, uh, there was litigation, so I can't go into, into details with this one, but, um. Yeah, it gets complicated with the court system, you know, we could deny something at city council and it can end up at the courthouse down the street. And even if everybody's against it, you know, a judge can rule otherwise and say. They have certain rights, they have, you know, Florida statute says, whatever it is. So there's no, there's no guarantee, the, the best thing to do is that. Folks come in and say, I'm gonna preserve this building and there's a lot of good people in Tampa that buy an old building. And they preserve it, like some of our cigar factories that are getting converted to apartments, one is getting converted to a hotel. Um, you know, other goes to office space. It, if I had all the money in the world, I'd collect buildings and restore them.
Me too. What is the downside though? I mean, the city would get sued and then the taxpayers would be on the hook for millions of dollars in legal fees? And then it would get overturned and we'd waste our time?
Every case is different, you know, I mean, yeah, every case is different, we have. Things that come up that, you know, it does get up into those seven figures in legal fees or six figure, that's a lot of money and a lot of taxpayer money. So we just have to. Just be very cautious, but again, if it was up to me, you know, preserve it, I have. I have family in, in Sicily, my aunt, she has an apartment in a castle from the seventeenth century, it's broken up into apartments.
That's amazing.
And you figure, wow, that's old, what do we have here from the seventeenth century?
Not much anymore.
No, the oldest house in Tampa is from the eighteen forties. Um, but other than that, I can't. I can't show you a structure off the top of my head. And yet my aunt, you know, she bought this apartment. Years ago where it was essentially a derelict building. Um, but it's, you know, over thirty years since she bought it, uh, people have invested in. Bringing it up to living standard, it's a beautiful apartment, it's a beautiful apartment, you think like you walk up these marble steps and. But why they didn't, why didn't they demolish that? You know, because somebody said it's. One day we'll, we'll restore it and it was restored and. I don't know, here it's, we, we should better learn to appreciate our history and not just say it's old.
I think so.
We should look at it and go, it has character.
There it is on the left.
It's special.
Tyler on the left, Tampa building's over a hundred years old, click that.
Yeah, those are all gone. And so that was the Tampa Tribune Building on the left. With the white paint. And you can see on that brick on the side, those are called ghost signs. And it said like Tampa Morning Tribune or something like that. Which I've, I've taken pictures of. Um, and then on the right, that was a furniture store. Uh, at one point and in the bottom, it was something else in the nineteen thirties, you can pull up photos of what it used to be, the facade was different, but. You know, I mean, and then the building to the right, that's all stuck over that you see, no, 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 up, up next to the demolished building. I think it's the GT Federal Credit Union, that building's from nineteen twenty five. It's, it's stuck over, it's all brick underneath.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yep.
Well, is there a different process council could adopt where there would need to be some precedent for a developer to tear down a building like this? As an example, the developer has to pre-sell a certain amount of the condo and have a construction permit ready.
We can look at it, you know, I'd hate to see something get demolished and then the financing falls through.
That's my fear.
We can't undo the de- demolition.
But we've seen that so many times, right? Especially during recessions where a condo developer comes in, clear the site. And they market the property and the market turns and they go, well, we're not gonna build it, we're gonna turn it into a parking lot, like.
It's something that we should, I, I have to look into, I don't have the answer off the top of my head, but, um. Yeah, I mean, just put safe, safety measures in place because again, you can't undo a demolition of a historic building.
Right.
And you couldn't rebuild it because it's cost prohibitive. Try recreating some of these buildings today, try building an all brick cigar factory. Where do you get, well, the bricks for a cigar factory are different from road bricks, number one, so the bricks would be available. But what would it cost to build a cigar factory? Fifty million, a hundred million, ten million, I don't know.
And could you even build it the same way with modern building codes, fire code, all that sort of stuff too?
You, you could do anything.
With a blank check.
With a blank check.
Right. Can we talk about the Jackson House? That's a historic building that's been a tough one.
We, um.
I know there's some good recent news on that, right?
Yes, it's, it's. It's gonna get saved, I had a meeting about it yesterday. Uh, it's one of my favorite buildings, one I've been fascinated with, I can't even tell you how long. I've gone by that building, walked to that building, driven by that building. And taken photos and you see on the picture on the right is what it looks like right now.
Does the city own the Jackson House?
No.
No.
No, it's a foundation that has it. But in the last. Ten years, I mean, it was, it looked. I mean, it was like this.
Yeah, pull that one up Tyler where it looks relatively nice and new, it is dramatically declined since this picture was taken right here, unfortunately.
Yeah, I have a photo of that, of the Jackson House that I took in twenty fourteen. Yeah, when it looked like that, as you see on the, in the bigger screen in the upper right corner. And now it's, uh, very different. Um, the National Trust for Historic Preservation, here showing the interior. The interior is very different, the colors are the same, but there's. Like, uh, beams and trusses inside to keep it standing and I've been in the house. Um, since COVID and I took photos and it's. It's spectacular in the way, the shades, the colors, the, it's very cool. And I can show you the photos one day. But I was asked yesterday, how do you rebuild and restore the Jackson House? It's like. When you do a car restoration and you say a frame off restoration, you disassemble the car. The best thing to do is to disassemble the house. Uh, create a more solid foundation and then, you know, reuse what you can, you know, put those. You know, number and mark every piece of wood or, you know, inventory things properly and then, you know. Build like a, a stronger interior, a stronger, uh, foundation and then just. Reapply those materials that you can use and then you have an original. Uh, or mostly original house, like with a car. You know, you can, you can restore a car with just the VIN plate. You know, you can say, I have this, for example, a Ferrari with racing history from the nineteen fifties. Crumpled up, one headlight, no engine. I mean, just like a crashed vehicle sold for about a million eight, two million dollars a couple of months ago. And Ferrari has their classic restoration department. And the, what I read was it's gonna take two million dollars to restore the car. But they can do it because it has the VIN plate and it has, and they will restore the car and it will be done by Ferrari using. Reproduction parts made by Ferrari, basically, I mean, it'll be an original Ferrari car and certified.
Yeah.
And then it'll be worth between ten and fifteen million dollars.
Wow.
But if you and I would look at it not knowing, we'd go, this is scrap, it's worth the scrap metal, Ferrari says no, so. Even though Ferrari and Jackson House are two different things, the point I'm making is Ferrari is saying, yeah, we can do it. Other people might say, this is junk. Not everybody supports rebuilding the Jackson House and I say, we can do it and there's a process to do it, it's been digitally mapped by USF. Uh, there's millions of dollars raised to do it. As we keep waiting, things get more expensive, there's just like legal hurdles, this and that, but I think we're finally moving towards. Restoring the building and when it is restored and open to the public. People will realize. Wow, and it would be a great example because you can say, if you can restore the Jackson House. You can restore anything and there's no need to say, oh, we gotta demolish it because somebody told me a story, I go. Why do you knock it down? Why did they knock it down? He goes, well, it was more money to replace the roof than what the building was worth. And I'm like, you know, what a way of thinking, but I just. You shouldn't give up on something that looks. You know, oh, it's too far gone, it's too far, I believe in, in taking the chance and restoring. Not just this house, but any property, anything is salvageable and I think the Jackson House is gonna be restored. Uh, and be beautiful as it, as it, it is beautiful, but it'll be safe for people to go in. I picture maybe a civil rights museum, maybe a, a music venue, a cafe, cause you think about, who are the famous people?
Yeah, go to the Wikipedia article right there on the top in the middle.
Yeah.
I mean, the, the history, the people that have stayed in the Jackson House are unbelievable, Martin Luther King, who else? Musicians and.
You had Ray Charles, you had, Ray Charles lived in a house not too far away, which it's, it's a street called Short Emory Street, the house is demolished. It's across the street from a church that's still existing.
James Brown, Ella Fitzgerald.
Yep. Cab Calloway, Count Basie, I mean, these. They are legends, but even at the time, um, I mean, those are huge. Huge stars, you know, that's why Central Avenue Business District, that neighborhood that it's in, was known as the Harlem of the South. Um. You know, people were coming here from all over. And, uh. Yeah, it's one of the few remaining historic structures for that area, for that history, there's a photo of that street. From the seventies and what it looked like and it's surrounded by buildings, they're all gone, they're parking lots. Um, but that's a, a view into the past, a significant parts of civil rights and the segregation era. It's living, breathing history and I don't wanna just show folks. Photos and a photo album, I wanna show people. Um, I wanna take them to the place, you know, like I take people to the University of Tampa and say, the Tampa Bay Hotel, wow. Everybody's jaws on the floor when they see it, that is one of the ten. Best and most important recognized Victorian structures in the country. You know, we have that, you know, imagine the Jackson House, people going, wow. You know, if these walls could talk kind of thing, all the people that have stayed there and all the stories they could tell. But it's very important, I believe in historic preservation and this is something that I've been passionate about for a long time before getting elected. And I wanna see it done, I look forward to the Jackson House, um, being redone, so.
And I believe the Venex have donated a ton of money to this cause, the city is obviously involved, it's owned by a foundation.
Yep.
Can you walk me through kinda what happened with the neighboring property owners, the Accardis and seven one seven parking? There was a fire code issue, the Jackson House needed space on either side of the building.
Yeah, I think that's all been resolved, uh, I think it's still in the process, so I don't wanna go into too much detail, but I think everything is working out, that's why I'm saying, I'm, can't wait for it to be done because.
So, so a deal has been made?
I'm assuming, I'm not, I'm not involved in it, you know, city officials would be, but. Everything that I'm hearing is positive, from the, the last meeting I have is we're moving forward, so I'm glad that. All parties involved are communicating and working together and, um. Yeah, again, I, 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 I think we'll see it done in the next few years, it's gonna be a lengthy process. But I will be very happy to see it completed and restored to its former glory.
And do you believe the reason it's being restored? I mean, look at the state it's currently in, it's really a shame to even look at it, it's, it's. In complete disrespect, disrepair.
Yeah.
Is public pressure and motivation a big reason why some buildings get. Restored and some don't? I mean, if more people riled up against that first watch building downtown on Tampa Street.
I don't know, I mean, anything could be overturned by a judge, not anything, but many things, but.
Is the reason why this will be saved because it's owned by a foundation? Like if this was a private property, just some guy owned it and said, well, I want a little extra parking right here, I'm gonna bulldoze it.
Uh, he would have, he or she would feel the heat of the public, you know, like, why did you knock this down, you know?
But he or she could do it because there's not necessarily legal protection for that building?
Yeah, I mean, it's. Sadly, I mean, most people can do, you know, not, not anything they want, but. This building is so significant and I think it's because it's one of the last and one of the very few that remain. Um, I wish that whole neighborhood would have been preserved, there's a, there's an article in the news today or the news story of archival footage. From the nineteen sixties in Tampa, specifically when the riots took place right near here and some buildings were burned, not many, but some buildings were burned. And that, that was in nineteen sixty seven, your grandfather. Was witness to it, he told me a story how he went down to the riots and, uh. And some of your grandfather's friends who were with him there, you know?
Moses White?
Yeah, I mean, Moses White and your dad were, grandfather were very, very good friends, I'm very good friends with Moses White's grandson, Andre, I just actually sent him that. Story this morning. Um.
I bet Andre has some incredible stories.
Ye- yes, and photos of the people that he met.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just amazing, but I asked, uh, your grandfather, go, there it is. Um. Did you know Moses White? And he goes, did I, very close friend of mine, and then Andre White is telling me stories. Of his grandfather and Dick Greco and, um, fascinating, I mean, what? What good people, you know, Moses White and, uh, and your grandfather and the friendship that they had. And, uh, ask your grandfather.
I have before and.
Just.
The urban renewal, kinda like what we mentioned before, ruined that area, they took out so many structures and put that highway in. Central Avenue, really, people have said like a black Wall Street, I mean, that was the black community's amazing center for business and, and living and. Unfortunately, now it's all gone. And I asked my grandfather at the time during these riots, I said, weren't you afraid to walk the streets? And he said, absolutely not, I walked with Moses White. And that man was such a member of that community and so revered that they had no problem walking around and pulling security and helping people.
One of your grandfather's friends named John Fernandez, who passed away. His wife was your grandfather's, uh, secretary when he was mayor. And he told me a story back in twenty ten. About, you know, he was, you know, Dick wanted to go down to the riots and I go, are you crazy? And, you know, and he went and talked to people and he goes, you have. All this chaos and I think it was, yeah, John Fernandez who, who told me, yeah, I know it was him who told me that he, they went down there. And, um. Nothing, you know, with Moses White, they had what was called the White Hats, which was, you know, young African. And um, nothing, you know, with Moses White, they had what was called the white hats, which was, you know, young African-American. Uh, males were wearing these white hats, which you'll see in the video, not these, these are. More like riot style.
TPE, right?
Yeah, these are the white hats.
Yeah, play this video. You can put it on mute. I don't know how long it is, but.
Yeah, it's, it's fairly lengthy, but it shows.
Just play it in the background and you can mute it.
Yeah, it shows uh Central Avenue. There's an image there of the Longshoreman's Building. And you and I can go to that spot where the police officers are standing and that building is still there. It's one of the very few.
That's awesome.
But. That vantage point, you turn around and it's Perry Harvey Park, so it's all demolished. Um. Yeah, I don't, I mean, it's, and I've asked people, I go, how can you demolish an entire neighborhood? Because the last business, which was called the Cotton Club, closed in nineteen seventy-four. I goes, oh, no, people wanted to sell and the interstate was coming through. And I go, the interstate is blocks away. You know, we're talking about a neighborhood, why demolish it all? And I mean, it's a question for Moses White and a question for Mayor Greco and a question for. And sadly, one of the only people left is Mayor Greco.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, somebody else to ask is Senator Arthenia Joyner. Her father was Henry Joyner, who owned the Cotton Club, who was the last. Uh, business, the last holdout. This gentleman was head of the NAACP, I believe. And uh, who's being interviewed, there's the, they're the police. I knew some of the police officers from that night. That's Martin Chambers. What sparked the riots was. He and others were accused of breaking into a camera shop, I believe, and. He was shot in the back by a white police officer and later died and then the riots. Broke out and charges were dropped against that individual. Uh, he's buried out in East Tampa, Martin Van Chambers, and he was like seventeen years old. This gentleman is Fred Hearns. He's a historian with the History Center.
Wow, look at this, look at the damage.
He knows a lot.
Play this Tyler real quick with the volume. I just wanna see what this gentleman has to say.
That doesn't exist.
None of it does.
Tampa's Central Avenue and Central Park Village is where the riots happened. It was a death knell for the city's premier black business district. So we lost this area that was known as the Harlem of the South.
It's not coming through the headphones.
Oh, wow. But yeah, none of these buildings exist. I couldn't, I couldn't tell you where this is. A lot of the streets are gone.
Yeah.
Because they've reconfigured the area. Um. There is a marker. At Perry Harvey Park from nineteen sixty-three. And it says Moses White planted these trees and the trees are still there.
Wow.
Um, in nineteen, I think it's sixty-three, but that mark, it's hidden in the bushes. Essentially, and then I was on the phone with Moses White's grandson and he goes, where that marker is.
You figured it out?
You turn around and where, you know, you look straight ahead and that's where the cozy corner was at. I think it was the cozy corner that, which later moved to West Tampa on Main Street. That building is there. Um, but there, but it's a park. I go, this was a neighborhood. I mean, like, things that we're looking at here. I don't know where they're at.
Play it Tyler. Kinda go back a few seconds.
District was never the same after June of.
Seven, people raged and set fires.
People were pissed off all across the country. This, this wasn't a Tampa issue as much as it was a national issue, as we all know.
Three nights of rioting followed the police shooting of a nineteen-year-old unarmed black man named Martin Chambers, a burglary suspect. Hundreds of National Guard troops were brought in amid fears the violence would get even worse. Our footage that hasn't been seen in decades.
Wow.
Fred Hearns is curator of Black History at the Tampa Bay History Center.
But this is amazing that you've got this.
We showed Hearns our newly digitized film.
You've got shots of Central Avenue that I'd never seen before.
Tampa's Central Avenue and Central Park Village is where the riots happened. It was a death knell for the city's premier black business district.
So we lost this area that was known as the Harlem of the South, where we had black businesses and. Black entertainment venues where people who were world renowned came to perform. The Central Avenue District was never the same after. June of nineteen sixty-seven.
And at the time, there was fear that more of Tampa would burn.
Unbelievable that this just does not exist. You go to this area and it's parking lots, period.
No, it's a park.
Well, well, but outside of the park, I'm saying is just none of these buildings are here.
No, no, so, yeah, it's, 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 it's terrible. It's terrible. How can you, it's like demolishing Ebor City. Think about it, you know?
Thank God for guys like this who are passionate about the area and keeping the history alive.
Yeah, Fred Hearns knows. I mean, he is uh, an authority there and the history's lived it. He, you know, it's fascinating, so.
It's amazing. Well, we've been going, I don't know, hour thirty, hour forty-five. I know you're a busy man. You got a, a city to run, right?
Gotta go back.
I really appreciate you doing this Guido. Thank you so much. Um, I know you're kinda active-ish on social. Do you wanna sh- share your social media so people can follow along?
Yeah, just Guido Maniscalco, easy enough.
Maniscalco. Alright, well, that's all for today.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you guys for watching this episode. If you enjoyed it, make sure to like it. Check us out on YouTube, subscribe to our channel, give us a comment, give us some feedback. We wanna know how we're doing. Thanks for watching. Bye, everybody.